Dean. Yes, so nice if you can put your cameras on if you're here. And yeah, let us, let us see where we go with this. We always advertise this, this questions and discussion period, but we don't know. We never know quite how we're going to go. And if we had talked for 15 minutes, that's fine, 30 minutes, that's fine, 45 minutes, fine, but no more than that. We will definitely stop at six. But like I say, if we, if we stop before, that's absolutely fine. Two, because this is entirely up to everybody here. You know, what do we, what do we want to talk about? I mean, we often start of these sessions by indeed going back to the speakers and seeing, I mean, do you three Ellen, Ellen and Charles? Have anything that you'd want to say now? I mean, after having heard the other speakers, do you know what I mean? It's not essential that you do, but I mean, it's clear that there's quite a lot of points of contact between what you were talking about. But also you were talking about, you know, quite different aspects of the whole. I mean, maybe, I don't know, Charles, given that you started last, do you want to start first with this? I mean, do you have any, any, you know, thoughts about what the, what the two Ellens were saying? And you are, you all three of you are allowed to disagree at this point, of course, or indeed at any point. Or if you feel you all agree entirely, that's fine too. But feel free to say, I mean, Charles, do you have any general reflections?
Sure, I guess the thing that popped into my head as I was hearing both Ellen's talk was just what the notion of acquisition is. I guess this is like a philosophical question, maybe, but what does it mean for someone to have acquired something that, to have acquired something, I guess. And the term in particular that makes me think of this is fossilization. Because, you know, the work that I talked about and the type of research that I've been interested in, really, I think, is challenging in a way, the notion that people can't change. And yeah, so that's, I guess, something that I would be interested to hear from the Ellens about. Whether fossilization is a thing or how do we even identify when someone is done acquiring or whether they are ever done acquiring? Yeah, this type of thing.
Sure, yeah. Ellen B, let's ask you first. I mean, do you either respond to that or raise other issues? It's entirely up to you.
Well, since I talked mainly about loan word phonology, I think this question is very relevant. Because what I think happened, what you see happening in loan word phonology is that if there is initial contact of people who are not familiar with the borrowing, the lending language, you get a great deal of variability and then those patterns become established and fossilized. As there be, there just sort of becomes a grammar of how to adapt these foreign words.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So is there any, is there anything else that you want to, you want to raise yourself about hearing the other at the?
I wondered if Ellen wanted to respond to that one because, but, but, but a general issue that I'd like to raise is just the, the relationship between production and perception. Charles, you showed beautiful cases of generalizing across a class, a natural class. And some people have claimed that, that, for example, there are two papers by Dionne Silberdin Park and Dionne Howen Park, where they compare Korean listeners, speakers, learning English, their ability to generalize across classes in production and perception, and argue that generalization happens more in perception than in production. So that's again, a general issue that is of perennial interest.
Yeah, absolutely. Ellen S, other Ellen, do you have, do you either want to respond to what you've just heard or raise other issues that they can respond to?
Yeah, but the, the question of fossilization, I, I mentioned a term and then I said, maybe I shouldn't have used that word. So showing that I was a bit unsure whether I should actually have put it on the slide. I don't believe in fossilization in any, in acquisition. I mean, in any theoretical sense, in the sense that I don't think that there is a state where people can't acquire anymore. But I guess people have talked about it in this way. Because as a late, sort of late learner in an instructed language setting, at some point, if there's no more exposure, if, if, if the number of people that you learn the L2 from is very, is limited and you don't get exposed to language anymore, then I think on the surface, you can get this sort of fossilization, but that wouldn't be inherent in the acquisition process. As for the perception, production link, that's, that's a very interesting, interesting point. I have been thinking about it a little bit myself, but I don't know to what extent this is related to what Ellen just said. But I, in the talk, I mentioned Miriam Brusma's study on the adoptees' perception. And they did, they actually did like another study a few years later with Chinese adoptees, who then turned out to be able to produce Korean contrasts, which they weren't able to perceive, which the authors take to mean that it must be something that they haven't really acquired in their phonology, otherwise they would be able to use it in perception. But they can only use it in production.
So right, and there have been studies like that with Japanese speakers also being able to produce the RL contrast, but not perceive it.
Right, thank you. Yes, absolutely. So yeah, yeah, lots to think about. Yeah, fossilization, is it a thing? Is loan word phonology, second language phonology, are they the same? Are they, and everybody else, what, what, what do you think? Or do you have questions? This is a point at which indeed, you know, anybody could ask very specific questions about any of the speakers or could raise other issues or disagree or make points. Do we have any volunteers? I have a question that I wanted to ask of you three, which partly prompted, well, prompted indeed by listening to you. And, and some of the things that Ellen, first Ellen was, was raising, the notion of representations. And, you know, the idea indeed that there can be weaker and stronger representations, you know, we heard about that. And then Ellen B was, we saw some sort of classical phonological representations of these sort of moraic, you know, that, that kind of thing. And then with Charles, we saw, you know, whole systems sort of behaving in a particular way. So, so I suppose, you know, what I was thinking is, well, you know, are these the same things, you know, representations? And I suppose another thing that I was thinking is, are they the same kind of thing that, that phonologists talk about? When they talk about representations, you know, phonological representations? Because it strikes me that they may be partly on and maybe they partly aren't. And, you know, so I mean, if we're thinking here about, you know, how, how second language learning interacts with phonology, there's presumably, I mean, if we believe there's phonology indeed, and that's one thing, but there are many other things as well. You know, human beings are complicated. So, yeah, I mean, what, what, that's something that I would like to hear your thoughts about, you know, the notion of representations and exactly what we mean by them. I see there's a hand up, so maybe, I mean, I, you know, I'd like to hear what you think about that, but there's a hand up. So why don't we ask, is it Paroma Sanjao?
Yeah. Hi, so what I was wondering was, I want, I was very intrigued by the discussion by all three of the speakers, of course, but especially Ellen Brosler's, the exact kind of work that she was, that you were discussing about the gemination and the use of that in loan word phonology or in English words. So we see here, I'm, I work here in India and in, so we see this phenomena here in some of the Dravidian languages that we have, Telugu, Kannada, these kinds of languages where English words are, when they are grammaticalized and we do a lot of code mixing and switching, so a lot of words, English words are used in our everyday like use of these languages. So all these words are pronounced with gemination, just like, so not just, and these languages by themselves distinguish between singleton and geminates. So that's a lexical contrast in these languages. So, and English words are always germinated, but the, these speakers, the English that they are exposed to is not native English. It is Indian English, the English that we speak, right? So, but typically in all the grammaticalized words, so it's not a phonetic cue probably because I do not know whether our English is spoken phonetically any different from the languages that we speak otherwise. So there is something about the phonology of the language probably. So here in this divide between whether there is a phonology involved or whether there is a phonetics involved. So I was thinking, trying to think through this conundrum over here. And so what are your thoughts on such a phenomenon where it's not really a foreign language? You are not really exposed to the native language, but these are, it's a bilingual situation. Everybody speaks English and English words are used in the language as well, but only in these germinate forms when they are used.
That, that is a fascinating phenomenon. And I don't know anything about this in any of the languages that you mentioned, but I know one language spoken in India, in Malayalam. The claim is that in Malayali English, the English voicing contrast is realized through gemination. So voiceless stops are germinated, but voiced stops are not. And that's because voiced consonants in Malayalam are invoiced, it's singletons are intervocalically voiced. And so the gemination protects the single voiceless consonant from becoming voiced. For the other kids, I would have to know more about.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm quite well aware in Malayalam what's happening as well. And in fact, it's quite interesting because in, not just in the borrowed words, but in Malayalam native vocabulary, you have intervocalic voicing as well as gemination, both as strategies that are existing. You don't allow more than one germinate in a word and so you use voicing strategy in there as well. So that's, there it's a slightly different thing that's happening, but these languages do not have intervocalic voicing. They do not have, so, and, and in Malayalam, it tends to happen to the stop consonants mostly because it's the voicing. But here it's happening to nasals, laterals, all kinds of things.
So what is the context for gemination?
So, so for example, you take an English word like pen, with which we write, so in, it would become pennu. In, so similarly with a germinate. And whereas the singleton na and the germinate na are contrastive in Telugu. So it's not as if these are so not there like the Korean case. So I was wondering between this divide between phonetics and phonology. So where do these kinds of phenomena would fall analytically, right?
Right. Again, I would have to understand the facts better. I'm wondering, are there word structure constraints? If the phenomenon you just described sounded a little bit like the Japanese gemination, possibly that, could you analyze this as an attempt to maintain the Coda affiliation of a consonant?
Right, right. So then that would be a phonological analysis, that, that's the kind of analysis I've gone for so far, but it's a phonological analysis. So, but that doesn't quite ring in any kind of via means with respect to the phonetics.
Right, right. So just as with the Japanese data, there is also a phonetic analysis, which, which may in fact be more successful when you look at the range of data.
Yeah.
Cool. Do Ellen and Charles, would you have any comments on this?
The one thing that comes to mind, well, just, you know, in the discussion of loan word adaptation in general, is that sometimes some things that we are, like tokens that we are, identify as adaptations, might not actually be adaptations, but like code switches. So in this literature on mixing, language mixing, there's this distinction drawn between like a borrowing, which is adapted into a language, you know, and made to conform to phonological constraints and so on, versus the bilingual speaker often is the one who is using this new word, switching into the other language and then presumably using the grammar of that other language to pronounce this word. And there's an entire literature on the sociolinguistics of this phenomenon that, you know, I didn't even get into at all in the latter part of the talk, which I regret because there's a very interesting social context for like these types of language contact effects. But my own view, when like I look at loan word adaptations or like foreign words mixed in to a base language, is trying to think about like where on this continuum between like fully adapted item to fully switched language, this particular token lies because the, there's like a strong social implication as to where on this continuum you are, where like, you know, there's some signaling potential to, for, you know, when someone's speaking a language that is not English, like mixing in an English word, but using English phonology with it as opposed to adapting it. And so that's just a point that I want to raise because sometimes that, that possibility complexifies like our treatment of this type of data.
Sure, further complication, everything, absolutely. We like complications, don't we? Great, yeah, Holman, say.
Oh, you need to unmute. Forgot about that. Hi, so I had some questions for Charles. And so something that I found very thought provoking about your talk was your discussion of systemic differences. And so I was wondering if you could speak more about that, both on the theoretical level and on the methodological level. So on the theoretical level, it kind of makes me wonder. So when you're, we're talking about systemic vowel differences, it seems like you're talking about entire languages, phonology versus specific sets of contrasts. And on the methodological level, what I'm particularly interested in, because I do work on vowels, is what does that mean in terms of vowel normalization? So does this mean that this is something you would, I mean, would you, would you still normalize vowels? Or would you not normalize vowels in terms of methodological approaches to this issue?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the first part, I guess I'll say that I don't know the answer to that question, like what, what is the, what is the shape of the knowledge that someone has about an entire vowel system? I've just made the proposal in these papers that a learner knows something about this because you see an effect of it from one language to another. But I think that there's a lot of room to explore, like what, for example, the effect of type versus token frequency of certain vowels would be. Because like in generating the table of norms that I presented on that slide, comparing Korean to English, I just did a very coarse, like, let's treat each vowel like it contributes equally to a, I don't know, long-term average spectrum, where we have a global F1 and a global F2, like, you know, if you were to take an average spectrum of like, you know, an entire running stretch of speech on average. And you assume that the vowels are all represented equally in that stretch of speech, then you would get this global F1 and you get global, this global F2. But, you know, of course, that's not the way languages work. They don't use each vowel equally often. And so that, that's actually, I think, a two-course estimate of really what the nature of the knowledge is of the entire vowel system at an acoustic level. So I can see studies trying to explore like whether, you know, for vowel, for one language that has this vowel system, but like, you know, one of the low vowels is really frequent versus this other vowel that has the same vowel system, but one of the high vowels is actually really, really frequent, whether they're like different effects in those two cases. Because actually, the type of knowledge of the vowel system contains information about frequency as well. So that's like not something I talk about, I talked about in the talk, but that is something that I think is a definite direction for future research. Because, you know, I think currently, the proposal as to what someone knows about the entire vowel system is like really underspecified. I don't know what they know. I've just made a proposal in terms of kind of global format levels. In terms of the second, oh, and one thing I want to mention in connection with that is that, you know, because these papers were put through review. So I got lots of very thought provoking feedback from reviewers, one of which was a one comment being something like, well, you know, everything is going up, but couldn't it just be that like, there's some universal, because, you know, I talked about universal patterns? Couldn't there be just some universal tendency to just like raise vowels in context of language contact? And so some work that I didn't mention, but that is encouraging to me that, you know, that's not the explanation for this, is where you get the opposite situation where the, the contact system has lower, sorry, higher global format levels were there, you do see a systemic change where actually you go in the opposite direction. And that's what we saw with actually the male learners of Korea. But yeah, to your question about normalization, I don't think that normalization is not happening. So I guess I'll enter this in two parts. I think listeners normalize. I think there's, there's plenty of evidence from like the phonetic literature, especially on speech perception, that like, you know, this is a process that happens and reflecting that in like a presentation of production data, like, you know, because we have different units for representing frequencies and, and often they're not presented in Hertz because that's not the way we kind of perceive frequencies, which is good. In terms of how to like analyze vowel data, I mean, I, I think that really it probably is going to depend on the question. In the case of the male learners that I was talking about, I looked at raw formance of the female teachers in comparison to the male learners' own formance for English. Because I was trying to seek an explanation for why they were moving in the opposite direction of female learners. And so there, I wasn't doing any normalization or even converting to a different unit because, you know, learners do have access to the acoustics, so I just wanted to understand whether this could provide an explanation. But yeah. It might totally be appropriate to actually perform analysis on normalized measurements in some way. But like, even there, like, you know, you might be familiar with this literature on like different types of normalization, some types of normalization, like remove social variation and sometimes don't, sometimes don't. And, you know, if you're interested in social variation, then you'll have to choose that method carefully.
Great, Ellen, you, oh, sorry, yeah, you have your hand up, is that about this?
Yes, I wanted to ask Charles, when, when you were talking about this, I couldn't help thinking of the things that say dialect coaches do, which is say, oh, you have a different set point for different languages, but then you should of course see effects on consonants as well as vowels. Did you see anything like that?
You mean kind of like this idea of articulatory setting?
Like, you know, okay, if you're going to speak French, then you do make your mouth forward and.
Yeah, exactly. So that was the original idea actually behind, so when I was like seeing all these vowels change and they were like kind of all moving in the same direction, I was like, oh. And I talked actually about this a little bit with Brian Jick, who is an articulatory guy. And we were talking about, yeah, this idea of cross linguistic variation in kind of the default articulatory setting. Like maybe, maybe some languages may be related to the content of their vowel inventory. Maybe they have like a different default tongue height, for example. If that's the case, then yeah, you could easily see one language influencing another in this systemic way because they're, they're influencing each other at this like default setting kind of level. But that's where the male learners' data created a problem. Because i- if you, if you rely on that type of account, then you don't predict disparities among the genders because the, the difference in articulatory setting is the same because of the articulatory nature of that. So this is why I ultimately like gravitated toward an acoustic account of this, because that's like the way to make sense of it in my mind. Because the male learners do in fact have it, they're in a different position relative to the L2 input in their case because of the gender difference. But no, I didn't look at, I didn't notice anything specific about consonants in terms of something being able to be explained in terms of a like change in setting. Yeah.
Great, there is a question in the chat, Chico, it's from you. Do you want to just unmute yourself and, and say it?
Ah, yeah, no problem. Yeah, yeah, thank you to, to all the speakers. Yeah, so this is a question for Ellen Simon. So she was talking about a typical population and how studying those population could help study the notion of fuzziness in phonological representations. And then I thought about, you know, L2 speakers who master the sound system of the target language very rapidly with very little input. And I don't know if this has been started or not, or whether we can learn from these or not. So I just would like to hear Ellen reflect on that, if, if that makes sense, yeah. And then, yeah, she also talked about this hypothesis about, you know, overrepresented subphonemic representations, which link to a typical population. And does that hypothesis make any prediction to explain, you know, these other typical population who master an L2 sound system very easily?
Yeah, thank you. This is a good question. I'm not sure I know the answer. I am, when you asked about the near, near native or near L2 native, so people who acquire an L2 very rapidly or very successfully, I was, I was going to try to explain this by, by going back to, to external variables like the input and the exposure and saying that maybe if you have a lot of exposure to, to, to many different speakers, so if you're exposed to a lot of variation, then this is going to help you to, I don't know if I should use the word store, but to, to pick on the right acoustic or relevant acoustic cues to build your categories. When you then said without much input, you added, if they, they're so successful without much input, I don't know. I don't know if those studies that show that L2 learners are, or can be highly successful with, with minimal input. And as to the, yeah, why, why some, some learners are successful, I, so I, if I understand your question correctly, it's sort of saying that, okay, we have these atypically developing individuals and then who have a deviant degree of specificity in their phonological representations, then if the ones who are very successful, do they also, is there something special about how they, how their phonological representations develop that makes them so successful? So is there like an opposite mechanism at work? I, I don't know. I, I, so that would then mean, I guess, that they mechanism uh at work? I I I don't know. Um, I I uh so that would then mean, I guess, that they um would have a um in in these uh Lisa Al's uh study, that would mean that um they would have a a a a low subphonemic sensitivity, which would somehow be strange to to assume that, because you would rather hmm want to hypothesize that um they're very good at perceiving details and at fine grained phonetic acoustic differences. Um, so, yeah, that's uh that's far as as far as my answer goes uh at the moment, I think, but thank you for your question.
Yeah, very interesting. Yeah, yeah. And maybe in terms of perception, they are just the same and it amounts to uh their production grammar. I don't know. Maybe it has to do with the way they implement that phonological knowledge. Maybe they are good at, you know, uh implementing the phonological grammar. I don't know.
Yeah, I I guess it might also be at the perceptual level though, but but but, yeah, I maybe both.
Okay, very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Laura, Laura Downing, you have your hand up.
Um, hi, and thanks, yeah, for really interesting talks, really thought provoking. So I had a question that I I think is kind of is relevant, well, a couple of questions that are relevant for all three of the speakers. So I was quite interested in the in the discussion of um well, fossilization, but especially as related to Ellen Simon, which is uh saying that in her talk about the importance of variation and the the input and then also the uh importance of long term studies as opposed to short term studies. Um, yeah, so I'm working my way up to a question. Yeah. So I think my question is this. So, yeah, Charles, that you did a short term study on what a five uh a set of people who are learning Korean before going to Korea. And you, it was really interesting to see that there are already effects um on the speakers in just five or six weeks. But are you planning um a follow up study after they've been in Korea for a while? And one reason I'm asking this, I'm trying to pull these different threads together is you mentioned you got a gender difference. And you thought one reason for that do was due to a lack of variation in the input that was mainly teachers of one gender. And so of of presumably, once these students are in Korea, they're going to get a lot more variable input. And do you expect that than to change their results? Yeah. So that's one thing. And then another question that you were all talking about to about fossilization. I wasn't sure when Ellen Broslow and Ellen Simon, when they responded, if they were talking about individual fossilization, you could call it or community uh fossilization, because I think, yeah, at least, and also this relates to the question we had from the young woman based in India, that there are bilingual communities where there start perhaps starts to be standards of what you aim for or how you adapt uh foreign words and even, you know, this question of whether you're code switching or trying to speak the other language. I'm trying, I'm sorry. I'm saying trying as someone who's tried to speak many foreign languages and failed. Hey, but try to speak the other language that you also thinking, I mean, maybe you're aiming for a perfect target or not so perfect target, because yeah, you want to show you know the other language, but you might come off as an arrogant snob if you're too good and too far from the community norms for adapting that language. Yeah. So these, yeah, so the questions then are, yeah, do you expect differences in short versus long term and getting more variability, or specifically for Charles, but then also the bigger question of community versus individual fossilization? How can one, I guess, test for that? And then part of the phonological implications for both uh individuals and for communities. Okay, very long winded question.
No, but great. Lots of, lots of things to think about. Indeed, relevant to all three. Who who wants to go first?
Uh, sure, I'll start. Um, I uh can tell you that um there is a follow up study that I didn't actually talk about um in today's talk um that I published in twenty nineteen that was basically following these learners, who I should clarify during the period of of observation that I talked about, they were already in Korea. So they step off the plane and they immediately go into this like set of Korean classes. Um, and in this follow up study, which I'm going to send out a link to in the chat, um, I basically uh met them again a year after they had been in, but after they had been in Korea for a year. But it stopped, um, you know, formal instruction of Korean. And what you see there is basically that some, some, but not all of these effects persist, which suggests that it's not something about like just the intensity of their L2 learning or something specific about like, you know, having to study Korean four hours a day or something like this. Um, uh, as as to whether the long term effect, in principle, I would, I would expect to be different. I do, because exactly to to your point, um, you would be um getting a much broader sample of what counts as Korean. Um, and I'm I'm not exactly sure whether it's enough necessarily to override that initial um very intensive um exposure to Korean, but um, yeah, I I I think that there is a strong possibility for basically the nature of that pattern to change. Um, yeah, I'll let let the Ellens chime in first on the latter questions.
Yeah, would either of you like? Yeah, Ellen Broslow, you look like you're going to speak. Is that right? Oh, you're muted.
Shall I or? Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, um, no, I think, thank you. This is a an an interesting point about the um community fossilization. Um, um, and uh I I think that um even though I put the, even though the the term was on my slide and many studies in the past mostly have have used it when talking about um L2 learners, I I think that it's still, as I said, um, suggests a sort of inherent inability to get any further in the acquisition process, whereas I guess when you're talking about um community fossilization, that's not, it's not about an inability, it's about a, I don't know, an an um uh sort of consensus, maybe, or I don't know if that sounds too conscious, but uh sort of among in a community that this is how 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 we, how we are we going to pronounce things? If if that's, if that's what what you mean, I I was thinking, I don't know if that's what you're also referring to, but just about um for instance, in uh in in uh in Belgium, in in Flanders, um, um, people replace uh when they speak English, replace dental fricatives by Ts, uh, I think. And um, that's a sort of, there's a sort of um um maybe, well, maybe some people just, just I would say, I'm not aware that there's a dental fricative in English, but uh also amongst our uh students, there is sort of consensus that, okay, you do, you you replace them by Ts. And if you want to sound really posh and you want to impress your teacher, then you're going to try to uh produce a dental fricative and say think, but it might be frowned upon by your fellow students. So I wondered whether, yeah, social linguistics there sort of comes in and and also influences the the acquisition uh process. Um, that's but that's an interesting, uh, interesting comment. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, Ellen, uh, Broslow, you, did you want to?
So I I just wanted to say uh that that is an important distinction, the community so called fossilization versus individual so called fossilization. And of course, it's um then an interesting question, if a community arrives at a particular strategy, is that because that's somehow the most natural strategy, given the data to which they're exposed, or is it just that it's somebody influential adopts this and it propagates throughout the community?
Um, one thing I want to add is um a- about at least individual level fossilization is um part of the reason why I've hmm like abandoned this notion is for the same reason that um I've kind of become disenchanted with the um specific notion of language attrition in which language attrition is permanent. Um, because I just don't think in principle that we are gonna ever be in a position actually to show that either fossilization or attrition are permanent. You know, not unless we like literally follow individuals until they die. I mean, we just, we just can't, we can't in principle prove that. Um, and, you know, we we do see instances of people later in life either um relearning a language or continuing to develop to develop in the L2, which just makes me sort of doubt the whole notion of of kind of permanence, um, whether we're talking about L2 development or L1, L1 change.
Right. There's a comment in the chat. I don't know, would the author, do you want to say that, uh, Roma?
Uh, no, that was just adding some context.
Yeah, to uh to your earlier point, yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, right. Well, I mean, that surprisingly, time, time has flown. I mean, not surprisingly, the ti- time always flies. I mean, we do still have uh five uh five minutes. Um, and, you know, tr- tr- traditionally, we give the the speakers a chance to sum up as as well. I mean, I don't know whether you would have uh any uh sort of any any longer, um, you know, uh, is all the other further things that the three uh speakers would like to conclude uh the the session with? We could start. I know. Why don't we start with Ellen Simon? If if you do, um, do you have final reflections on the topic? Not final, actually, not at all. You can carry on doing it for the rest of your life, but you know what I mean for the for this session?
Um, thank you. Um, yeah, I I I I didn't know. I've I've heard many uh many interesting, many interesting things, many uh thought provoking uh things. I'm definitely going to um think some things uh over. Um, I I was um, um, I I very much liked Ellen's um way of suggesting that um um, you know, the question should be, how do phonetic and phonological features interact rather than uh is it phonetic or or phonological? Um, and 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 then, of course, the question is how, how, how exactly are we going to well, solve that question? Not, but how, how exactly are they related and and what exactly is is taught? And this is, of course, a long longstanding debate where where um uh people are still still uh contributing to with with new papers. Um, and then in in Charles' uh talk, I I um, I was um uh very in- intrigued by the the link between between um uh acquisition and present day language variation and and language change like uh which where you can uh look at actually historical um developments uh on which you could give some, some, some better uh some better idea, which you could get some better ideas. So um, yeah, lots of things to to think about. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yes, uh, other, other Ellen, Ellen Broslow, with your your closing comments?
Well, um, something I I a a common thread through all three talks that that I found very interesting was this question of different levels of representation. Um, so Charles' point that you you need um lexical similarity, not just phonetic similarity, is um very closely related to, I think, what we found in our study of the Intun- Mandarin speakers' failure to be great at at interpreting English contrastive prosody, um, because it functions differently in the two languages. And then, of course, Ellen Simon's um uh points about lexical representations are directly tied to that, so that that whole uh question of the various levels of phonological structure and how they interact is, you know, obviously, an interesting one.
Absolutely. Okay. And Charles, you, I think, have the final word. So what what?
Um, I guess I, maybe I I'd return to the the first question that that you started this session with, like, you know, what is phonology? Is there phonology? Um, where I I think, you know, what you've heard in these three talks is that there is phonology, but but maybe phonology looks, looks different from like what we might teach in like an intro linguistics course with, you know, rules and and moving things around or this type of thing um that there's uh, right, like Ellen, Ellen was just saying, multiple levels of representation and they all have a role to play. Um, and we might just see evidence of one versus another um given a certain context, but, you know, looking at a variety of contexts, monolingual contexts, contexts of learning and contexts of bilingualism, allow us to see more of these other types of knowledge come out. Um, and I think that's part of of why this body, this type of research is is important.
Great, absolutely. Thank you. Uh, well, thank you all you three very much. Again, thank you. Um, and thank every, thank you everybody for 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 speaking. Absolutely. It's harder indeed, I think, to do this um online, but actually, I really got a lot out of that. I think that was great. So, um, yeah, thank you all. Um, and yeah, that is it for um the um for the special session.